Good evening. We call the meeting of the Edina Planning Commission for November 28, 2012, to order. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Forrest.
Here.
Commissioner Schroeder.
Here.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Here.
Commissioner Potts.
Here.
Commissioner Fladier.
Here.
Commissioner Kowski.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
First item of business following the roll call is the approval of the meeting agenda, which you all have. Are there any additions to be made to the meeting agenda? Seeing none, a call for motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting agenda is approved. Next item on the consent agenda, minutes of the regular meeting, excuse me, of the Planning Commission for November 14th. You have that in your packet. Are there any changes to be made to the minutes? Seeing none, I'll ask for motion. Commissioner Fisher.
Move approval of the minutes.
Been moved to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is community comment. Community comment is an opportunity for residents to share new issues or concerns that haven't been considered by the commission in the last 30 days, or which aren't scheduled for future consideration. And are not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. So would anybody have any issues they wish to bring before the commission under community There do not appear to be any, so we'll move on. The first, the next item is public hearings. And the first item under public hearings is a variance for the city of Edina, Braemar Arena, 7501 Eichelaway, Edina, Minnesota.
As a signed variance located out at Braemar. It's at the Braemar Ice Arena, west of the golf course, right along Highway 169. As many of you are probably familiar with, there's an addition being built onto the north end of Braemar Arena. This is the existing building here. This is a look at the addition. This picture was taken about a week ago, so it's currently under construction. The request before the Planning Commission is a signed variance to allow two wall signs. The variances would limit the signage for each of these two uses to 43 square feet to advertise the commercial businesses that would be located in that new addition out at Braemar. Currently, our sign ordinance only allows 24 square feet of wall signage maximum. The code does not allow any commercial-type signage, as that's typically not associated with our parks. The city council has allowed these two businesses to locate as a permitted accessory use. So the use is allowed as an accessory use to the arena, as a private-public initiative to assist in the costs in that project. If this project had a commercial zoning to it, the individual signage that would be allowed for those two uses would be up to 148 square feet each, quite large, under our commercial zoning. Again, the request is for a maximum of 43 square feet for each use within that facility. So again, the addition is located here in black. The signs would face the front of the building and would face, or be located on the face of the building that would front onto Highway 169. In looking at the variance criteria, staff believes that the variance criteria is met in this case. The proposal is reasonable. Again, the use is allowed as an accessory, a permitted accessory use. The practical difficulty is caused by the unique structure here out at Braemar. It's essentially three buildings all connected together. The exterior signage will help people kind of in wayfinding if someone's not familiar with that site and that's what they're looking for. It would be difficult to find that, given the large structure. Also, this site is unique in that its setting, it's almost like a commercial area. We'll take a look at some pictures. But it faces, again, Highway 169, and across the freeway is property that's zoned planned This is a look basically from the building itself, across Highway 169, and those industrial uses across the freeway. The property to, the nearest residential property to the north is 1,500 feet away, and this is the view to those residential areas. Again, you can't see the signage. The signage, again, would be located on the front face of the building, facing the freeway, and not facing the residential area here again, and that's 1,500 feet away. So, and again, the proposed signage, staff feels, is reasonable, in this case, at just 43 square feet. So with that, staff's recommending approval, subject to the findings as presented and outlined in the staff report. Susie Miller is here this evening. She's the manager out at the Braemar Arena to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions of staff? Mr. Fisher?
So Carrie, just to be clear, the only reason we need a variance is because, I mean, if this were in a commercial area, this, we wouldn't even be talking about it. It's just the fact it's a unique use in a city park, essentially, or on city property.
That's correct.
Okay.
Other questions of staff? Thank you, Karen. Ms. Miller, would you care to make any comments?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, discussion amongst the commission? Any comments? Commissioner Fisher?
I don't have any problem with it. I mean, it's an initiative, a public-private partnership. This is part of that. To have the private piece, you have to be able to know they're there. The only reason it's a variance, as Carrie stated, is it's the location. It's not, they're not proposing signage that's unusual, or overly large, or anything else. I just don't see any problem with it. And if we don't have any other discussion, I'd be happy to make a motion whenever you need me to.
Is there any other discussion? Commissioner Fisher?
Well, that was quick, wasn't it? I'll make a motion to approve the variance as described by staff, with the staff's recommendation and the one condition, limiting this overall size to 43 square feet each.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the application. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the public hearing agenda is finals, final rezoning ordinance amendment and final development plan, Mount Properties, 6,500 France Avenue and 4,005 West 65th Street, Edina.
This is the last step in a project that you're all extremely familiar with, probably more familiar with this site than any other that we've looked at, given all the sketch plans and reviews that we've had. So to quickly go through, this, again, is for the medical building, five-story medical office building, proposed kitty corner from Fairview-Seltale Hospital. This is a look at the rendering of the five-story plan that was based on the Planning Commission recommended, recommendation. The city council approved a comprehensive plan amendment to allow five stories on the site, and a preliminary rezoning to PUD and preliminary development plan. So the request before the commission is final rezoning to the PUD and recommendation on the zoning ordinance that would establish this zoning district. So again, the building itself, the plans that you reviewed through the first phase have not changed. The significant change that has occurred wasn't with the building, or the structure, or the landscaping, et cetera. It's the chiller that we talked about that was originally proposed along the south lot line, as we conditioned as part of the preliminary approval that a noise study was to be required as part of that. And the noise study came back in that it was to, it was going to exceed our standards. So they have relocated the chiller to be now on top of the parking structure in this location here, tucked behind the stairwell for parkers on top. So that stairwell located right here provides a screen for the Pointe de France located to the south here. Here's a look at that chiller, and again, here's that stairwell. So that's the one change that's occurred since the last review. Just quickly go through the plans. They haven't changed. Again, we're proposing the two-story podium height on France, maximum height at 62 feet. Some of these renderings are all the same as we looked at the first go-round. So primary issues are the plans consistent with the approved preliminary plan, and is the PUD ordinance as written acceptable? Just quickly moving through some of the site plan. Again, the access points haven't changed. Got the right-in, right-out, or full access on 65th, with the right-out only on France. Bike parking is available inside the ramp. Based on the code requirement, 27 bike stalls are required. Again, the specifics of making sure that they have 27 would be reviewed at the time of a building permit. Landscaping all meets code. There are required 34 over-story trees. The plan provides for 61. Trash enclosures are all within the parking ramp, meets code. The applicant has submitted a lighting plan that was handed out before you. Again, that demonstrates that the foot candle measured at the property line is all code-compliant as well. The proposed, or any signage that would be located on this building would be subject to the conditions in the RMD, Regional Medical Zoning District. So that would be consistent with all of the zoning around the property. The PUD ordinance that's before the Planning Commission, I want to note one change that I made, and I handed it out before you this evening, in that there wasn't a provision that recognized the permitted accessory uses from the Regional Medical District. And that provision is key, in that it allows the retail space on the main level. That was just an oversight the first time that we went through that ordinance. So there's, that was always assumed that there would be retail opportunity on the first level. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the request this evening, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined. I can stand for questions, and the applicant is here for a presentation as well.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Potts?
Carrie, I've got one question that also, it shows up under accessory uses, the signs allowed per Regional Medical District. Could you remind us what that is, and also remind us, you know, based on this rendering, it looks like just the street numbers on the building, how you track that through?
Yeah, rather than trying to go by memory, if I can, I've got my code over at the desk. I can recite all that for you here in a minute. Okay, the sign requirements. One wall sign per building, per street frontage, with a maximum of 120 square feet total between the two signs would be allowed. And there's a special provision in the Regional Medical District only that allows one retail, or for each retail space within the building, one sign would be allowed over that retail space, up to a maximum of 15 percent of the wall face itself. So you could expect that each retail user would have a sign, and then on each side of the office, there could be the name of the building.
Thank you.
Mr. Forrest?
I'm not sure if the, under F1, it's, I don't know if we would do this if they hadn't, but they've moved the chiller back to the roof of the parking ramp area. So I know previously that this would have been really pertinent to put in there. I mean, it can stay in there, fine, but I think it's kind of an artifact of the previous plan to have it on the ground near the edge of the Pointe de France property.
And if I may add, that could be taken out. It's simply restating existing ordinance. So whether it's in this PUD ordinance or not, that still would be the requirement for
Other questions for staff? Would the applicant care to make a presentation?
Yes.
You look familiar.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. It is a pleasure to be before you this evening. My name is Steve White. Address is 3,600 Minnesota Drive, Edina, Minnesota. We're here this evening to request the final approval for the new project. The plans have been slightly revised from our preliminary presentation to you on October 10th. Our development team is here this evening. Luigi Bernardi of Aurora Investments, a building owner, can address any long-term ownership questions. And then Ed Farr of Ed Farr Architects will outline several new nuances that have been updated on the plans. So we are here this evening to answer any questions, and I'll turn it over to Ed Farr. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Ed Farr, 7710 Golden Triangle Drive, Eden Prairie. And as Steve mentioned, all I really want to do this evening is point out the changes since our last submission. So this updated site plan, it was on the screen a moment ago, but again, it shows the chiller located on the top level of the parking structure right here. And I wanted to just let you know the events that took place on our acoustical study, which was a condition of our last set of approvals. We first went out there to conduct an ambient noise study to find out what our benchmark was, and we conducted that study on the corner, our south, excuse me, southeast corner, right at France Avenue curb here, between the property line of us and Pointe de France. And we measured that three times during a regular workday, the morning time, 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., noon hour, 11:00 to 1:00, evening, 6:00 to 8:00. And then we also did a Saturday, noon hour, 11:00 to 1:00. And frankly, regardless of time of day, we always got plus or minus 65 decibels, a reading as an ambient noise level, at that particular location. We then backed up all of our microphones 185 feet west into the site at where this second point is located here, which is roughly where our chiller was going to be located. And we took those same measurements during those same four periods during the week, and we, again, had a very consistent reading of approximately 55 decibels, which a delta of 10 decibels in sound acoustical study is half the noise. If it would go up, it would be double the noise. So we tested our chiller then with that new noise level at that proposed location, and found out that we did, in fact, fail the ordinance which adopts Minnesota code, the Minnesota code adopts, MPCA standards. And so we failed that test by putting it on top of the parking structure, and specifically and strategically locating it north of this stair tower that you see on your screen here now. This is that close-up view of the rendering Carrie showed a moment ago. We were able to meet a number of objectives. One is a better visual screening of it, and of course, the acoustical success at the Pointe de France property line, which was our minimum compliance benchmark. And we also went further, and we drew a line above this two-story, all the way to the top balcony of Pointe de France, which is beyond our property line and up a number of feet, and also found substantial compliance there also. So we not only complied with the numerical values, but because our numerical values were also less than 10 decibels than the ambient, they're not even additive. That is to say, it will be negligible sound. The next thing, the city planner asked me to prepare a lighting study, even though it wasn't on part of the checklist, and so we did. You've seen our night rendering. We've had it up here every presentation, and you've seen the wall-mounted decorative architectural light fixtures we have around our sidewalk. And it was also requested of us to adopt the decorative lighting that you folks have started along 66th Street, those Bishop's Crook poles along your sidewalks. And so passed out to you this evening, because it's relatively hot off the press, is this graphic, which is a color rendition of our photometric plan, demonstrating that we have illuminated with five of those fixtures along our new sidewalk at 65th Street, as well as our France Avenue widened pedestrian area sidewalk. And we've combined that with the other architectural wall lighting that we've already shown you on these renderings. And this color display basically tells you that we have, you know, met a minimum foot candle level throughout, and maintain the maximum delta between the minimum and maximums as well, between our pole spacings. And of note, of course, on the west side of our property, facing residential zone, and the south face of our property, facing residential Pointe de France, we have no exterior luminaires, so there will be zero light levels at those property lines. This is that city standard light fixture that was given to me by city engineer, Mr. Hool. This is our light fixture catalog cut of a parking deck, a light pole. These were shortened to 20 feet. And up here in the upper right-hand corner of this graphic, you'll see that it's what we call a sharp cutoff luminaire, as described to you before. The lamping is all up inside of the housing with downcast brightness only. And this is an example of the wall luminaires that you'll have around the building. They come in a few different styles. We haven't exactly picked out the grillage style yet, but that's generally what we've been including on the rendering. So that concludes my presentation of just those changes. Everything else has been the same. We do have the finished materials here, and any other supplemental requirements that we had in our application, we can show you if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Forrest?
It's kind of more of a comment than a question, but it is a concern nonetheless. I'm, when I'm back at the noise study again, and I mean, I think, looking at this, the noise will be tolerable, it'll be fine for the residents next door, if indeed these numbers are accurate, because these aren't measurements. The only ones that really count to me right now are the ones that were done by formula with the manufacturer's information. And then I don't know anything about the power, whatever, pressure levels or whatever. So I can't, you know, assess that at all. My concern, though, is the fact that the times that we used to study the ambient noise were not times that necessarily are relevant to the residents that are living at Pointe de France. The weekday levels, I mean, that would be very pertinent if it were a, if it were next to only another commercial area, and well, how is this adding to the noise in that area? But I think that we need to keep in mind going forward that when we're looking at a commercial project next to a residential area, what is the sound going to be like when the ambient noise is down? What is it going to be like when somebody wants to sit out on their balcony at 10:00 p.m. with a friend and have a glass of wine? What is it going to, how is it going to be when, you know, at 7:30 on Saturday morning? And that's when people are wanting to enjoy the peace and quiet of their home. And so it's, I'm glad you included a Saturday in there, but the rest of those are busy weekday times with a lot of bus traffic and auto noise, delivery trucks, and things like that. And since noise is measured and, you know, evaluated based on what's the ambient noise, and does it affect that? No, it wouldn't affect that necessarily. So that isn't, so that's a comment generally on the process versus this project, I guess. And I just hope that, you know, you're very sensitive going forward to the residents, if there is an issue that you look at down the road. I think the technology has improved over time, so it's probably as quiet as it can be right now. But if there's any mitigation that's needed in the future, kind of keep it in your back pocket, because I think we should be sensitive to that when we're imposing on a residence.
May I offer a reply?
Yes, you may.
To the extent it may help. Thank you, and yes, we will be aware of that and be sensitive to any complaints that are forthcoming. As a matter of benchmarking, the requirements in your ordinance, which again, go to the state, go to the MPCA, are 60 decibels during the wake hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then over the nighttime hours, it goes down to 50 decibels. And so at the current, at their current property lines, as I pointed out earlier, they're already in non-compliance with the 65 decibels off of France Avenue already to their lot, as well as the 55 decibels, which exceeded also. And so we're not being additive to that, but they're already falling below compliance on their side of the property, regardless of anything that we do. The criteria that we used off of our chiller is a maximum usage of that chiller. That's an air conditioning chiller, of course. So it would be a summer, weekday, 2:00 p.m., 110 degrees outside, and we're just cranking that thing to its max, whereas, you know, evening hours, things like that, it'll be working at a much lower capacity and lower sound level pressure.
Well, I appreciate your going back and reevaluating the noise levels, too, and being sensitive to that, and moving the chiller once again. So, thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Thank you. Do others wish to address this issue? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll ask for a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion amongst the commission?
Chair Gribble?
Commissioner Fisher?
Maybe this is one of the outcomes when you've come before us this many times. I think we've pretty much talked about everything on this project. It feels a little weird that the final plan review, there's not a lot of, I can't think of too many questions. I think, I'll comment on the process and the applicant's willingness from the very beginning to work with us and be flexible and come back, and always trying to improve the plans and the final product. And I was actually out there today, really kind of looking at that site, and was getting actually pretty excited about it. I think this is going to be a great addition in the city.
Other comments? Commissioner Schroeder?
Mr. Chair, I guess I have one question I want to ask of staff, and the conditions, Condition 8 says sustainable design. The design-construction of the entire project must be done with sustainable initiatives, as outlined in the applicant's narrative within the Planning Commission staff report. And in their narrative, they talk about, their point number six, under community benefits from the new project, talks about green building practices will be implemented in three phases: building design, construction phase, and long-term operation of the clinics. The general contractor has compiled a summary of the green practices we will pursue for each phase of the project. How are we going to know that they actually do these? What's the metric that is established to allow us to know that they've satisfied Condition Number 8?
That's a good question. Maybe it's one that we need to, you know, add a condition, that there has to be some type of measurement.
Do we have a copy of the green building practices that the general contractor has provided? Can we? provided, compiled?
I believe we do, from what they had submitted originally, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Schroeder?
I don't know that we'll be able to come up with these metrics tonight. I mean, we have people here who are familiar with how to do these, but I don't know if this is the venue to kind of frame that. I don't know exactly how to proceed. I think we all like the proposal, I just don't like the vagueness of this. I mean, we would advocate for sustainable design practices, just as they've outlined it. We don't know what they are, and we don't know what measure they're actually being held to when we approve this. But I don't know that we can get to an answer easily tonight.
Commissioner Forrest?
Similar to the statement a couple of times, that they all have different educational efforts with their tenants to regarding green business practices. It's, again, it's a great idea, but how much will that be incorporated by the building tenants? I don't know.
Kerry, what's the oversight when a building's being built by this, what oversight does the city have or exercise during the construction of a facility?
I'm thinking that we require, as part of the building permit, we require them to submit a list or some kind of a checklist that we can, that they hope to achieve, and we can monitor that. That's probably as, I think, as close as we can get to requiring that they do some of these things. Let's have them tell us upfront as part of the building permit, we're going to do these things, and then we can hold them to that.
Well, I mean, condition nine is that the building must be built with sprinkler systems. Well, it does say subject to review and approval of the fire marshal, so I guess that takes care of that one. Okay. Other comments? Mr. Platter?
I was just going to say, I don't, it's not in here, but I remember in the earlier ones, they did have a list of all the sustainability features and things. So I'm under the assumption that they could hopefully readily provide that upcoming.
I don't disagree with that, but when they say they're going to be through the construction phase, we don't, in this, we don't have a way of monitoring that to see if they're actually doing it. And while we appreciate that they're saying they're going to do it, I think we could probably point to a lot of familiar models that we've said are going to be sustainably designed and operated and constructed. And actually, we can measure those things, and we can recognize that they're falling considerably short of the goals that were set out at the beginning. And I think that if we're going to be serious about advocating for green building, sustainable design practices, we need to have real metrics that they can be responding to. If the developer, if the proponent can provide those things in a checklist kind of form that the city staff can use through the building permit process, I'm comfortable with that as a starting point. I don't think it gives us the kind of information we would need, but it is a way to allow us to move forward.
Let's ask the applicant, is the applicant able to provide such a checklist for review by the building process, the building, as part of the building permit process?
I'll try. Yes, it is true, we'll be able to provide you with that same list. It was a one-page checklist of the things that we included on our application before. If it didn't make its way into the final development application, we apologize. It was submitted as a matter of public record, and we'll stand behind that. Perhaps we can turn that list into such checklist. I believe it is, I shouldn't say I believe, it is our intention to create a tenant handbook, tenant manual, if you will, in the interest of promoting sustainability to the tenants. There are certain things that they will be able to choose, and certain things that are part of our shell building construction that they will be following through on to complete certain systems. And so, as you know, talking about sustainability items with probably other applicants, there's a whole range of sustainability initiatives that are possible and sought after. So, short of talking in circles, let me just say that we'll endeavor to create a checklist based upon the list that we already gave you as part of our prior application.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Potts?
Question while you're up, Mr. Farr. I think you told us you went through the Energy Design Assistance Program, or you plan to?
We are applying for that currently, correct. Once we get through the zoning process, of course, we're moving more diligently now with a little bit of quickness to our step. So we're going to be engaging them to do the Energy Design Assist program. That's exactly right.
And that's a program that sets out a process and establishes goals and...
That's exactly right, sponsored by the energy company, Excel Energy. It promotes sustainability and energy conservation, of course, specifically with the electrical utility, but they look across all ranges of energy, whether that's an increased R-value as an example, more efficient motors, pumps, filters, things like that in the building, mechanical systems, electrical systems. We will be embracing that process and making it part of our design.
And I think that offers perhaps a solution, Commissioner Schroeder, what you were mentioning, that we, you know, if the applicant's willing to share the report, share their goals, and demonstrate they've met them, you know, there's a whole process in place that does a check on that. And the whole idea is to reduce energy use, which is a primary sustainability goal in my mind.
The concern, I mean, I don't disagree with any of that. The concern is, we make it a condition of our approval, but what if they, three years from now, aren't meeting the operating requirements that they set out as part of their goals? What happens to our approval? They haven't met any longer, are they out of compliance? We have it as one of our conditions of approval, they're going to do these things that they say. But if they can't do them three years from now, what position are we left in?
Good point.
It's a question for the city attorney, I assume. You know, it is an interesting question. What happens if, at the end of the day, a builder comes before the commission and the council and receives approval to do something, and then doesn't do it? I'm not sure that, you know, I don't think it would come back before the planning commission. I think it would be a matter for... For, you know, the city and the city attorney to take a look at. I'm not worried about them performing. But it's an interesting point. Other comments? What is your pleasure? Mr. Forrest?
I move approval of the final development plan at our level, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report, including the city engineer's letter.
That's as stated on page 10, the staff recommendation, the final zoning. In other words, the final rezoning from PUD 1 to planned office district to PUD, planned unit development, and final development plan. Is that correct? Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Commissioner Platter?
Do you, a friendly amendment on to that, would you want to put something with the sustainability checklist as a condition on that as well?
I'm comfortable with that. If they can come up with something solid. I mean, it is something, I mean, we would have a leg to stand on, because it would be part of the whole zoning for that particular zone, so I'm comfortable with that, definitely. I was wondering, too, I mean, should we include in this the, we have the final development plan, but also we have final rezoning and the zoning ordinance amendment. Those two can be coupled together. Are we going to couple all three of those items together?
Right, that was my understanding of the motion.
Okay, good. Then that's the way it is.
Does the secondor okay with that?
Did I second?
I don't know.
I think you...
Yes.
Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the final rezoning, or to recommend approval of the final rezoning to PUD, the planned unit development, the final development plan, with the addition of the checklist at item eight. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved. We'll miss you guys. I'm sure not. All right, the next item on the agenda, correspondence and petitions. I don't recall seeing the council connection, but I thought, we didn't have one this time. Attendance, Commissioners Platter and Forrest are still neck and neck on the attendance race.
What's the prize?
Oh, there's a, we'll come up with a big prize, don't worry. The councilman and chair and commission member comments. Do any commission members have anything that they wish to call to the attention of the public? Commissioner Platter or Potts, anything in particular, or Commissioner Forrest?
Wasn't really any other updates.
Updates from our one, two weeks ago.
Okay. You have been meeting with groups, however?
Yes, meeting with groups, correct. But it's been the same ones we talked about earlier.
Okay. Other commission member comments? Staff comments?
A couple of things, just to update you. The city council has a very large agenda next week with several items that the planning commission has made recommendation on, but they have not moved forward yet. Seltdale Apartments will be on the agenda, the subdivision on Concord, the 50-lot subdivision, and then the Eric's Ranch. So the council will be busy with some of our previous work. And also wanted to, we don't have any business scheduled for the meeting on December 26th, so there's no formal land use applications. So in speaking with the chair, we thought we might go ahead and cancel that meeting.
Was that an objection to canceling the meeting? Oh, okay. Does anyone have any objection to canceling the meeting on the 26th? Okay, we'll go ahead and cancel that meeting, Kerry. When will this, this item will go to the council? Do you know when?
This will, I believe it is December 18th. This would go to the council.
Okay. Commissioner Platter?
Kerry, can you comment on what's the agenda for a couple weeks? I know there's a couple things on there, or at least one thing in particular in the Morningside neighborhood.
Yeah, you'll have two or three variances. We haven't had too many residential, just one? Maybe it's down to one now. One residential variance, and then we've got a subdivision proposal in the Morningside neighborhood. It is an eight-lot subdivision. So something we haven't seen a lot of here in town, but that will be coming to you at your next meeting.
It's surprising that there's room for an eight-lot subdivision up in Morningside. It's next to your house. Everything else is. All right. Any other commission member comments or staff comments? All right, we will thank you for your participation this evening. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Is there a second? Motion been made and seconded to adjourn. Is there any other, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, thank you.